I think what we'll do, if you don't mind, we are in light of time. I think we're going to skip the CIP presentation with the airport and Mr. Rudy. I want to move on to Mr. Dunn and the charter review recommendations because of the time restraint.
Thank you.
Thanks. And just for the public's knowledge, that work session on the CIP will be postponed to the next meeting, Mr. President?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Hurley. Mr. Dunn, how are you?
Good. There were so many committees. Good morning, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, members of the council.
How are you?
I guess I'm really here to answer your questions. We've presented your reports, so whatever we can do. Mr. Wilber, of course, standing by, and I have the charter on my iPad because I can't seem to find the original version, so I apologize.
That's okay. Thank you for being here and thank you for reading.
Certainly, thank you.
Any questions from council on what was presented by the Charter Review Committee? And I know we're going to be reviewing the first three articles, but as an overview, any comments or questions that you may have of Mr. Dunn? Moving forward with the individual articles from the brief book. It would start with Article One. The first section, I believe, was nothing more than administrative motions that the committee did among themselves. We would start with Article Two, correct? 202A, to add a residency requirement for the county council of two years in Wycomico County and residency within the district for one year and a minimum of 25 years of Were those really in line with what you saw in other counties or something that the committee just gave?
There was a lot of discussion about that. Again, I'm here representing the 15 members of the Charter Review Committee. As you can see, this particular item passed unanimously. I'm not so sure, Mr. President, that there was a whole bunch of data crunching done on this. I looked at Mrs. Ackley in the previous discussions on compensation. I think this was more of a kind of a gut and just kind of a discussion that it might be a good thing to require residency within the district and two years of living within Wycomico County. The kind of the thought being that if you're new to the county, running for county council right away might not be a good idea, but if you've lived here for a few years and got to know the lay of the land, same with your district, that that might be a nice idea. And the minimum age, it's not going to be covered today, but we also did that for the county executive, that a minimum age of county council of 25 and in Section Four, which, again, we're not covering today, but there was a minimum age of 30. And again, that just really had to do with, I thought that experience might be a good thing, and then it was, I'm not saying there was science behind it, 25 and 30 were relatively arbitrary numbers.
Any questions from the council? Yes, Josh?
Just process-wise, I guess, how are we internally going to? Do you want to take them item by item, or I don't know if we had figured that out?
Well, right now, we were scheduled to go through, I think, Article One through Three, which is very minimal. So that's what we're reviewing today.
Do you want to comment on? I have comments for, I wrote up for each ones, but I can hold it towards the end or whatever.
No, we can certainly move. I would suggest in chronologically. I didn't know, there doesn't seem to be any comments on 202A.
Well, I did.
Yes.
Well, I do say this is a, they've given us a great job and given us a big tree that we need to trim. You know, we can't obviously fit everything into the, onto the ballot, so, but this one particular, the residency requirement for two years, you know, I think that's fine. The one year within your district could be an issue when there's redistricting every 10 years, that could be an issue, that somebody could be in a district, say District Three, and suddenly they're now in District Two, and that part could be challenging. And then the other thing I'd say is, I don't think there's a particular need for, right now, it's, you know, they just have to be a qualified voter. I don't think we need to have it as an age of 25 or anything like that, but that's just 202A, that's my thoughts on that. If we had to strike one thing, there's plenty of ones too, that's one I wouldn't mind letting that recommendation go to the wayside.
Either let it go by the wayside or we can amend it.
Is that the age when you're talking about?
Yeah, age and residency requirement. Yeah.
Well, what I'll do, Mrs. Hurley, if you'll keep a running list of which ones, these recommendations, we really want to review again, that would be helpful. So 202A, we'll certainly review again in another work session since there are some reservations.
President, I might remind you and the members of the council that one of the things that we determined as a Charter Review Committee to not do was to give our priorities. So we just put everything forward and then, just like you're doing now, leave the discussion as to what you want to move forward on. I thought maybe, however, Mr. Wilber, you had some thoughts, and we've discussed this, and if I may, Mr. Cannon. Paul had some thoughts about, again, there are 24 recommendations, and we're keenly aware that that's a lot of things, and Paul's done some initial thoughts on, should you go down and actually wish to put all of them on the ballot, how that best might, how that might best be accomplished?
I think I've mentioned this to the council, that I would recommend we do the ballot questions by article with subparts to them. That way, it might break down into about six ballot questions with subparts. The ballot question, say, for Article Two would have three or four subparts to it, depending on what you come up with.
But.
We've got a.
My only question to that, but that makes it an all or nothing for that.
It does.
Said article, yeah, so maybe if there's five, or as you said, there's six subparts.
Right.
It's not like three could get by and three wouldn't. It's either all six or zero.
Right. Yeah, that's sort of the negative of doing it that way, that the negative of making each one a ballot question, we could have, you know, 20, 25 ballot questions, which that's an issue too, I think, for the public.
The other thing there is, you could have them pick subparts that are no longer, you know, useful if they don't pick the rest of them, if you put it together that way in some instances.
Getting back to the individual article items, Councilman Hastings, you said you had other questions on, did you have any questions on 202D or 202 or 205?
I'd say the only other one was the, just the questions I did have on the 205A and B, there was a special election, the special election that's described in Section 206 to fill the seat to eliminate that, unless there.
So what our thinking, and Mrs. Ackley was kind enough, as many of you were, this is not changed for her, but her circumstances were very unique, and as you'll recall, she was appointed to a vacant seat in the council, and then because of how this is currently written, she then had to run again. Again, this is Mrs. Ackley, but this is not pertaining to her. She had to run again less than a year later, and so we thought that was an interesting thing. So what we recommended was that at the end of A and B, you will see that the last sentence says, unless there is a special election as described in Section 206. So we are eliminating that sentence, and we're eliminating Section 206 completely. And in effect, what we're saying, bottom line, is when and if there is a vacancy that someone is appointed to fill, that person should fill that vacancy for the entirety of the term. That's the long and short of it. Now, we thought that whether that be, because what it does now, again, in Mrs. Ackley's case, that's where Section 206 came in, and we just thought that that was a little burdensome and cumbersome. It's difficult enough, as we all know, to get people willing to serve, and if an appointment is made for any seat, we just thought that, well, let's just let that person fill the seat for the remainder of the term, and that's what.
I'm not so sure that wasn't the, necessarily the intent. I'm not going to speak for the people that wrote the charter, but when they sit the next election, I'm not real sure. I've always been under the auspices, I think they were really thinking, the next county council election, you know, but it just didn't happen to say, next county council election, you know, I think it might have just been assumed, you know, and I could be wrong there.
That's right.
You know, but I think that would have, right, they would have filled it out for the entirety, that certainly makes sense. So that same section, one thing that I've always, and I brought this up, it wasn't one of your recommendations, but I still think this needs to be changed. I think it was very important because we all had to live through that process, which obviously didn't necessarily go real well, the, I'm not saying from the process, I'm not saying, I'm not saying you, Ms. Ackley. Right, right, yeah, let me preface that, you know, I mean, and you were part of the process, you realized the process itself was quite, yeah, it was challenging, to say the least, but, and I've always said this, and I still think we need to change that, is, you know, one word there needs to be changed, and that is, when there's four persons recommended by the Central Committee of whatever political party the person is that vacates, it says the council shall elect. That, 100% to me, that should be may elect. And my example is, you know, if you've got, you know, hey, it'd be great to see 15 people apply. You know, we get 15 people apply, and then, you know, whichever Central Committee recommends four people to us, but you could have, you know, in an ideal world, it'd be great to have six or seven highly qualified people. Now, all of a sudden, you know, there could be someone on there that the council may be, you know, thinks a good candidate, but they can't even, they can't even consider that person, you know, because the Central Committee, you know, it has to come from those four. So I think, you know, the process should still be, quote, the same, you know, and the Central Committee still participate and still make their recommendations, and, but I think it should say, may, not shall.
What section would that be in?
That's A, right? Isn't that 205A?
A, third line.
If you want to make a note of that, Mrs. Hurley.
And for the council, again, thanks to Lynn and Laura, minutes of these meetings were really well done, and we had, we had discussion about that.
And there was a lot of discussion about it.
That's right. We ultimately did not, there was not a consensus among the committee to go down what you're talking about, but if you wanted to read our comments, they're well detailed, so.
I think the purpose, Michael, of the requirement for a special election was because, because I think that subject came up with the council not too long ago, there was a major concern that when you have an individual who is appointed, that person will represent their constituents for possibly three and a half years.
Correct.
But they were not elected.
Correct.
So the reason for this is to sort of bring it back to the true sense of democracy, where, you know, you don't have someone appointed representing you, you are given the opportunity at the next cycle to vote for that individual. So that's why that was, that was, that's why this is in here.
So, question, Ms. Hurley, Mr. Wilber, and Mr. Cannon, you may remember, wasn't this changed not too long ago?
Yes, you're right.
That's what I thought.
To Mr. Dodd's point, there were, in the CRC, we are aware of that, there are more than a few things that we addressed that had recently been changed, but we figured, well, everything is open for discussion.
Sure, sure.
And so, yeah, but you're, as I understand it, you're correct, Mr. Dodd.
Mr. Dunn, I have a question for you.
Certainly.
Whenever, because I was able to, well, I didn't attend, I watched on PAC-14, and there were several members who had talked about the same party, only allowing council members of the same party to select a replacement of that party. Was that, was there any other discussion, if that was?
So, two things, if I may. One of the changes that we've added, and it's next on the list, is this doesn't, what's currently in the charter, doesn't address the possibility of an unaffiliated member of the council, i.e. an independent or what have you. So we're making a recommendation to do that. To your question specifically, we felt that while a Central Committee of either the Democrat Party or Republican Party would make its recommendations based on having to be a member of that party, that each of the members of the council should vote, if I think, and if I'm not.
Yeah, I remember one of the.
So instead of just the four, whatever, instead of just the Republicans, members of the council voting on a Republican-nominated replacement, or the Democrats just voting on a Democrat-nominated, we felt that, obviously, everybody on the council, regardless of what party they are, should vote in full for the recommended candidate, if I'm saying that.
Yeah, some of the previous council members had said, if, being of a different party, we're going to pick the worst person so they don't get elected, and I think it was.
Yeah, we can't.
It was just interesting, the dynamics of that conversation. I was like, hmm.
You know, that's why it's called politics, right?
Yeah, yeah.
All we can do is address the charter, but the unspoken things that may go on are out of what we thought, those, again, might enter into the arena of the people part of the decision-making that you all get to make versus what the charter might say.
Right. Any other comments? I think the final portion of this particular Article 206, that goes right in line with 205.
That's right. That's correct. That's why. So if you're going to agree to put on the ballot these recommended changes to 205, it would then make 206 redundant, and again, our recommendation to just appoint the person for the remainder of the term.
Could I ask you a question?
Of course.
With a special election, was there any consideration to how long the person that's appointed would be serving before the next regular election? In other words, if it's going to be three and a half years, maybe you want to have a special election. If it's only going to be 18 months, maybe not.
Well, doesn't it say that?
It's in the charter, yeah.
Doesn't it say that now?
It says more than 30 days, yeah.
Yeah, that's the only, it just says 30, that gives them the chance to register, but it doesn't deal with a.
This whole, you know, Mr. Posoda was just here, and I think at the end of the time, his acting appointment will be for the better part of two-plus years. So, again, when you all made that decision to choose Mr. Posoda, you knew that that was going to be a pretty significant balance of the term, if you will. So whether it's six months or whether it's three and a half years, we just, again, I'm just here representing 15 people, we just thought that it would be better to just appoint the person with the full understanding that he or she would be serving after the remainder of the term, that they were, the person they were replacing.
Any other questions or comments from the council in reference to these particular articles?
With the residency requirement.
So, that will, that'll conclude it. Michael, do you have anything you wanted to add?
Well, we had Section 300, so I just wanted to see if, Article 300, Article Three, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
That's no worries. The first one, 312 and 313.
Right.
You all know the great work that Lindsay Rader does, and we all know that there's PhD required to understand a lot of what Ms. Rader does, representing the county as our bond council. She came forward on behalf of Mr. Wilber with a whole series of recommendations, which I would highly encourage you all to have, kind of separately, you probably don't need me here, you need Pam Olend and Paul, but they had to do with things like extending the borrowing time from 30 to 40 years, which is becoming a bit of a standard practice. And so all of her recommendations, the committee felt, made the borrowing and put the county in a better position. Paul, feel free to weigh in here.
Lindsey felt for bonding, that we could do some adjustments that would make essentially her job and the county's job easier in terms of floating bond issues. You know, we have the never-ending issue of, all the bond proceeds may not be spent on the projects that are listed in the bond, so they have to be reallocated to other projects, and, you know, there's a whole series of changes that make that easier.
And instead of us trying to go through them, we simply, again, sent them to you all and said, good luck with that. But, again, we were in agreement that she's really good at her job and probably the things that she's recommending are certainly worthy of consideration by the seven of you. And then our last thing, Mr. President, yes, sir.
You'll come to us with those recommendations, I'm assuming?
Yeah, they're in the package.
Okay.
Right now, they're.
Where are they in the package?
They're, they should be. It's called Suggested Amendments to Wycomico County Charter Concerning Borrowing Powers. It was a Funk and Bolton memo from July of 2021, and it references several second sections. If it's not in there, I can certainly forward it.
It may be, and I have to, it might be something I didn't pick up on.
We most certainly just punted that straight to the seven of you. You're welcome.
Okay. On the 314, on the 314A, to delete the word generally and insert the words unless for the purpose of inquiry or information, I'm assuming this is giving the council a little more latitude in talking to department heads?
It's, again, it currently reads, generally, neither the county council nor any of its members shall under three provisions. And then we, I forget, to be honest, how this conversation came about, but we changed, instead of generally, we thought it strengthened to say, unless for the purpose of inquiry or information, meaning, members of the council don't generally go to look at one, two, three, have a purpose in mind before you go down that road. So just a small change that we thought might make things a little bit better.
Okay. Any questions or concerns on that? All right, Michael, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you all very much, and we'll make ourselves available at any time. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Paul. Thank you.
All right. Okay. All right, this was a concern of mine. We have a huge time problem here. We have a huge time problem here. I was thinking the Board of Education would be coming in at 1:00, but they're here at 12:30. And we're going to have to.
15 minutes, just do a quick 15-minute group.
We can do a 15-minute, we're going to do a 15-minute recess for lunch in just 15 minutes, so I apologize for that. I was concerned this was going to go long. We'll recess for 15 minutes if we could. Thanks. Okay, we're calling the meeting back to order for legislative session 2022-01, January 18, 2022. The next item on the agenda, we have a work session with the quarterly work session with the Wycomico County Board of Education, the superintendent. Good afternoon, glad to have you here. As always, you present us with an agenda, and we appreciate you putting that together. Some of this was based on some questions that council members had that they wanted to review with your, with you, and I will let you begin. The capital improvement program was the first item on the agenda. I think council was just curious as to where we were with all the capital projects and how you see us moving forward.
Do you want us to introduce ourselves first?
Yes, yes, thank you very much.
Remind me, I remembered this one.
Very good, very good.
Donna Hanlon, Superintendent of Schools.
Michael Murray, Vice Chair.
Lisa, I'm the Director of Planning and Construction.
And Mike Stoffer, Chief Finance and Operations Officer.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate you taking time to be here, as well as all the others in the audience there who have also come.
We also have Mrs. Lewis, member of the board, and Mr. Palmer, member of the board. Other board members were unable to be with us. Mr. Malone, as I believe maybe you've had communication with, is recovering. He is doing better than he had been, but he's unable to be with us today.
Should, yeah, thank you very much. So, capital programs, how's everything coming, right?
It's going well.
Good.
So, go ahead, just start with it, you're right.
Yes.
Good afternoon, President Cannon.
Bring the mic if you could, as close as possible, because it's very hard to hear with a mask on.
I was going to say, I couldn't hear her.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, President Cannon, Vice President Davis, and County Council members. On behalf of Superintendent Dr. Hanlon, Dr. Stoffer, and Board Chair Malone, who I didn't know was not going to be here today, we are here to discuss the board's FY 2023 Capital Improvement Plan and Budget. There are two integral components of the board's capital improvement program. Part one is the Educational Facilities Master Plan, EFMP for short, which is submitted and reviewed by County Planning and Zoning, and the Capital Improvement Plan, CIP for short, which is submitted to the county executive and county council. The FMP studies the issues affecting school facilities in detail. Data is gathered, analyzed, and used to make prioritized decisions regarding facility improvements. Key components of the EFMP include special initiatives, projected enrollments, facility needs indexes, and facility needs. Last year, we provided council with a detailed breakdown of how the board's facility assessments and subsequent data indicators are utilized to assist in prioritizing competing facility needs. We also noted where capital investments assisted in making significant improvements to the Facility Condition Index at several schools. The Facilities Need Index for Major Capital Improvement, shown on the left, is comprised of three weighted categories: Facility Quality Index, Utilization, and Full-Time Equivalent Enrollment. FQI is weighted the highest, as it combines the Facility Condition Index and the Program Index. The Facilities Need Index for Systemics is comprised of two weighted categories, that's shown on the right, Facility Condition Index and Utilization. FCI is weighted the highest, as it measures the key systemic components of each school. Both are prioritized to ensure funds are directed towards schools where the highest number of students can be impacted. The Major Capital Improvement List correlates to the systemic list, with many of the same projects identified as top priorities. Part two of the capital improvement program is the capital budget. We'll quickly look at what was approved in FY 2022, discuss recent developments with the Interagency Commission on School Construction, highlight the top FY 2023 project priorities, and recap projects accomplished within the past year. So, last year, for FY 2022 approvals, it included final construction funding by the IAC and the county for the replacement of Beaver Run, initial construction funding by the county for the Mardella renovation and addition project, and full funding by the county for the West Side intermediate roof replacement. For reference, there were two commissions established back in 2016 that have majorly changed or influenced how schools are funded and in some situations can be connected. The Kerwin Commission was tasked with school performance and funding formulas for instruction, which ultimately resulted in the blueprint for Maryland, and the gentleman sitting to my left is the one that's the expert on that one. The NOT Commission was tasked with several school construction-related items, which ultimately resulted in, for today's discussion purposes, Built to Learn and the IAC becoming a completely independent agency. In addition to BTL, there was the formation of an assessment and funding work group which met over the past few months and was unable to complete their tasks. Also, during 2021, the IAC conducted their own set of school facility assessments through consulting services, which was supposed to assist the funding work group in making recommendations. Ultimately, the group recommended the IAC not use the data to determine funding decisions until 2026 due to inconsistencies in the initial data presented by the IAC. Although the funding work group was unable to complete their work, the IAC continues to adjust their approach to funding recommendations. Gone are the days of projects being funded based on individual merit. They are forward, they are working towards a flat funding strategy. During the FY 2022 capital improvement process, which was just this past spring, 2021, they were utilizing a 10-year average approach. They have now shifted to what they call a target allocation, which involves several poorly-defined variables. We updated what we provided to you last year to show the shift from the 10-year average to a target allocation. What is shown as actual on the left reflects the past two funding allocation years and the current proposed IAC allocation at 90% of the total capital budget defined by the governor at $208 million. It's important to note that the IAC approves funding in rounds, specifically 75%, which occurs in December, 90% approximately in March, and 100% in May or June. The projected IAC funding for FY 2023 is approximately $10 million. However, they're also looking into freezing the current and next two fiscal capital funding allocations, which could rein for Wycomico from 6.8 to 8.3 million. This is from a recent presentation by the IAC. The before is a list of current funding programs, including the traditional CIP, which Wycomico relies on heavily at a 100% eligible cost-share formula. Wycomico's SSGP, we say Security for Short, allocation is stagnant at $200,000. Wycomico's Aging School Program, or ASP allocation, remains unchanged at $106,000. The EGRC, Enrollment Growth Relocatable Classrooms, only applies to LEAs with significant enrollment growth combined with number of. combined with number of relocatables. Wacomiko doesn't meet that criteria. The IAC delayed allocation of the FY 2021 Healthy School Facilities Funds, or HSFF, and combined it with the fiscal 2022. That is a competitive funding source. We'll get into BTL in more detail next in relation to the Mardella Project. They want to establish a priority fund, which would be tied to the IAC's facility assessments, which we pointed out earlier, and in turn, the traditional CIP would shift to fund only systemic renovations. And the ASP and SSGP funding would be absorbed by the proposed priority fund. The board's FY 2023 number one priority is Mardella Middle and High for both county and IAC construction funding. After review and discussion with the Executive's Office, School Building Commission, Senior Leadership, and Board, the use of Built to Learn, BTL for short, funds are required to ensure the completion of this project. The BTL program was officially live back in July. However, it took a while for the Maryland Stadium Authority, or MSA, and the IAC to develop and sign a program MOU. That is now complete. The MSA supplies BTL funds to eligible projects on a rolling basis. Their first bond sale was in November of 2021. A BTL-eligible project requires an executed memorandum of understanding between the Stadium Authority, the Board of Ed, and county government. We are in receipt of a draft project MOU, and will be initiating discussions with the School Building Commission soon. For those who are unfamiliar with the School Building Commission, it is specific to Wacomiko and was established by county government to make recommendations regarding the planning, design, and construction projects funded through the county's capital program. Its members include a representative from council, county executive, school superintendent, board of education, and others who typically have a background in facilities and/or design and construction. So why BTL? So back in September, when we met with the executive with the, discussed the FY 2023 CIP, as well as finance staff, it was determined that the project, that Mardella Project would need BTL unless the county would be able to forward fund a majority of the project. From October to November, there were various meetings, so many meetings, with executive and finance staff, senior leadership team with Wacomiko County Public Schools, the School Building Commission, the Department of General Services, the Interagency Commission on School Construction, and the Maryland Stadium Authority. During that timeframe, the IAC approved Mardella for BTL. The executive staff, SBC, board, and senior leadership team requested that Wacomiko retain project management control of the project. During December, the Stadium Authority did authorize Wacomiko to retain project management control. That put us in a situation where the Architecture, Engineering, and Construction Management Team had to develop a revised project strategy with an early bid package and a potential early construction start, and the SBC approved. We've since received the draft MOU as noted, and the Stadium Authority anticipates a first-quarter FY 2022 bond sale, which would be approximately April of 2022. So as noted, the IAC is shifting towards a flat funding approval, which will result in a reduction of capital funding for use by Wacomiko. It's important to the various stakeholders noted that Wacomiko retain local control of construction. Ultimately, the Stadium Authority wants to run all projects similar to what they did with Baltimore. As you're likely already aware, the construction market is extremely volatile right now and is likely to be exacerbated by inflation. However, BTL funds will be available by April. Quick reminder and update on how BTL came about and how funds are being distributed now. As seen here, majority of the funds are going to the big six counties. Wacomiko is lumped together with 16 other LEAs, although that group represents 25% of the state's student enrollment. BTL was originally proposed at a total of $2.2 billion. However, that has been reduced to $1.8 billion pending determination of the final amount of available debt service payments needed to support the program. We're unable to update the distribution as shown here, as they've not published anything. We do know that Wacomiko is eligible for $13.8 million, as determined by the IAC. So just for reference purposes, here's where Wacomiko falls in relation to Montgomery County, Carroll County, and us, as far as BTL allocations are concerned. So back to Mardella. Construction documents are being finalized. There are FY 2023 funding requests into both the county and the IAC. BTL funds are now available, and once an MOU can be executed in conjunction with the Stadium Authority, Board of Ed, and county government, they can be distributed. In addition, Wacomiko retains local control and potentially get an earlier construction start to get ahead of inflation. The Stadium Authority has requested that the business terms of the MOU be finalized first, which will take back to the School Building Commission and the Stadium Authority. We'll then bring it back to the executive and council for further review. Now on to the remaining project priorities in the board's FY 2023 capital budget. According to our Roof Asset Management Plan, which is a component of the master plan, next up for replacement are Wacomiko High and Parkside for roofs. We're in the process of finalizing a feasibility study with senior leadership regarding Fruitland Primary, as it's the next school on the Major Capital Facility Needs Index that we showed you previously. However, we have concerns regarding Wacomiko's ability to execute major capital schools, school projects due to the shifting funding strategies with the IAC. That's why BTL is so important to the Mardella Project. Since the CIP was submitted, the Maryland State Department of Education approved, I wish I could use the acronyms all the time, Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief, or ESR, funds for project priorities number five through eight. Eligibility established by MSDE aims at reducing the risk of virus transmission. The ESR II Salisbury Middle School Gym HVAC project was completed this past summer. So basically, the projects highlighted in yellow are being funded through ESR and are no longer needed as a request to local government. Here are some highlights of other projects that were completed over the course of the last funding cycle. We greatly appreciate the county stepping up and basically funding the entire Westside Intermediate Roof Project. As you're aware, it took over three years of requests to both state and local to be able to get those funds together, and that project was completed. Fire alarm upgrade at Fruitland Intermediate, Glen Avenue, which is being conducted in multiple phases, and thankfully, the third and final phase will be completed through the ESR funds. There was a partial roof replacement at Pinehurst Elementary, east wing restroom renovations at Pinehurst Elementary, as well as an elevator upgrade there. And we already made note of the Salisbury Middle School Project, and the bleacher and press box replacement is complete at County Stadium.
Can I ask a question about the fire alarm upgrade? What was needed? Because I know they're supposed to be done periodically, the testing and inspections. Was it a new system that you had to put in?
Yeah, I believe they gutted most of the wiring and devices throughout the building.
No, that's quality of life issue.
Life safety, yep.
Thank you.
So last but not least, Beaver Run is on schedule to welcome the administration team in June, and in turn, students in September. There will be some interim site work phases throughout the fall, with priority given to establishing the new bus loop before the start of the school year. Just a reminder, Beaver Run is a campus-style school, so we're not sure if we'll be able to complete all demolition of existing buildings. However, we're prioritizing the bus loop for ease of access for students when they return in the fall. And if we get further ahead, that'll, that'll be great, and if not, we'll have some interim phases. But everything will be complete by the new year.
And I have a question on Beaver Run. What was done to alleviate a lot of the flooding that we were seeing there? On the land surrounding it, before we did construction, there was a lot of standing water.
Yeah, so unfortunately, that site is downstream from a lot of other properties. So we worked with, let's see, our civil engineer there is Deus Bono Friddell. They basically sized everything to be able to hold the water that is there, because there's also a downstream issue with the county system, I believe, across the street. So whatever makes its way to the site should be able to be held and then slowly distributed so that that doesn't occur anymore.
So there's a good chance we won't see that flooding again?
If you haven't seen it during these last couple of rains, I would say we are okay.
It was significant, so thank you.
Our, our iffy stage was about eight months ago, and we made it through, so. And that's with temporary measures on the site, so with the permanent measures, it should be good.
Are you gonna have a ribbon cutting or a grand opening or something at some point in time?
We've been talking about that. No firm date yet. We want to get students in at the beginning of the year.
Okay, all right.
Do you anticipate any cost overruns based on the inflation that we're feeling now? And delays based on supply shortages?
Which project?
On, on any of the, well, I guess I'm thinking ahead towards Mardella or towards what?
So the School Building Commission has, they do a good job of keeping pace with that type of stuff. So the project budget is overall $72.1 million. That's all in with everything. Of that, around 11.5% is what I'll say is protection or hedge against inflation. It's either in a contingency, whether it be a design contingency, an owner's contingency, or a construction manager's contingency. In addition, the SBC will be reviewing, I believe it'll be by the end of this month, alternates. That's when we make hard decisions about what's base bid versus what could be either added later or is a better lifecycle choice in the alternates. That level of protection isn't even acknowledged in that budget yet, as well as we haven't cut into the FFNE portion of it yet. So it'll be a long 18 months, probably, once we get all of the trade contracts bid to see where it will play out. However, we do have some mechanisms in place to protect the budget at this point in time.
How long will they hold bids, or is that dictated to them by the state? Because I know, I just know today's rule, you know, that's getting shorter and shorter when the.
Let me phrase it this way. We, we put typically a minimum of 60 days, and the reason behind that is it's got to go to the School Building Commission, it's got to go to the board, and then it's got to go to the state. And those meetings are not always conducive to, to construction schedules. As all the business people are aware, you have subcontractors that may not necessarily be able to control that. We're seeing things like it's this, however, it could be upwards of this. So the construction management team does a good job of vetting all of those when they're looking at the individual trade packages to ensure that we're partnering, you know, they're partnering with the correct people to be able to deliver the material and the labor in time.
Any questions?
I had, I had two questions for you, and I cannot really, I don't think I can spell those acronyms, so I'm gonna have to say the long words. I was wondering for Mardella, does that qualify for any of the USDA federal funding for school buildings?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And then the, the House bill that's proposed for the IAC to cover all systemic renovation projects, regardless of cost, do you know where that's, is that going to help in the process for the new roof of Parkside? And potentially, what you can see happening is in that when I showed you the before and the after, they're basically, they're gonna rely on the priority fund, which the last number that was announced, I want to say was under 100 million. So if you're looking at a Mardella project at 72.1, 100 million or under across the state's not going to go very far through that priority fund.
They want to take the data they've gathered through their facility assessments. So basically, we will only be left with systemic funded projects. I think that bill's trying to make it easier to keep systemic projects eligible, because the IAC used to previously have a calculation. If you were spending over a certain amount of threshold on systemics versus what it would have cost to either major, majorly renovate or replace the school, they would have deemed that systemic ineligible. So it's trying to provide more flexibility between the IAC and the LEAs that they're able to justify their systemics.
Would benefit Wacomiko counties.
Correct, yep.
Any other questions? Josh?
With the ESR projects you mentioned, is, I'm assuming that's COVID-related with HVAC?
Correct.
Is that a savings that the county will realize if this is?
A significant savings, yes. So we, we took four projects off the list. I'm not gonna add them up, but five through eight that was submitted now is no longer needed because the ESR funding is offsetting that, and it's significant dollars. I mean, we're, we're over 30 million between ESR II and ESR III for all of the projects. So the trouble is having the time and staff to manage and execute them under what are some challenging deadlines.
Thank you.
Next item on the list was the current update. Maybe what precipitated this, I believe some other counties were sort of asking the state, you know, based on COVID, et cetera, are you, are the state planning to do, make any adjustments on KIRW to account for?
So that, we actually, we weren't sure exactly what you were looking for there in that agenda item, but if you look at item number three, Enrollment Relief Due to COVID Hardships, I think that's where you were referring to the letters that you may have seen. I know you saw one letter from the ESMEC Consortium.
Right.
That's the Eastern Shore Superintendent's, the nine counties, and then a very similar letter. I did not see that in the materials that you forwarded to us, so I just want to make sure that you have that letter, if you don't mind my, that is a letter that also went to the state legislature, co-signed by Mako, MAB, Pazam, those three entities. And both of those letters are asking the state legislature to, to hold local school systems harmless in terms of enrollment again this year because of very challenging situation related to COVID. While our enrollment has bounced back from 2020, it is still not yet back to the enrollment of 2019. So we've seen a little bit of bounce back, but we still have a ways to go. But, and that's based upon September 30 enrollment. We've continued to see that grow through the year, and we anticipate, for example, at the beginning of next year, that we'll see another nice bump. So, so what does that mean to you as a county? If the state decides to hold us harmless and we're able to use enrollment from 2019, MOE, Maintenance of Effort, would be flat. It would be the same for you as last year. Flat funding to us, whereas being held harmless would allow us to receive millions of dollars from the state in addition to what we would receive if we were not held harmless. So, and if we were not held harmless and we didn't receive those millions of dollars, then we'd probably be coming to the county to help us above maintenance of effort so that we can fund salaries and other fixed costs. So that's my assumption why Mako signed on to this letter, because it's actually a benefit to counties to have the state help with funding again this year. So, questions on that?
Is that the letter from Senator Carosa?
She, I believe, responded to the letter from ESMEC. I think I saw that. I don't know anything about whether she responded to the other, to the letter signed off on, like Mako and Pazam and, and.
Is this something that the school board has a position on?
You're asking me about that? Well, we certainly are aware of it and, you know, working with it, yes.
Obviously, I don't want to speak for the school board, but we're, you know, to be held harmless and to receive millions of dollars more by the state is something that the board would support.
It's a big deal.
It's a big, yeah. Did we, did you, go ahead.
I can just provide also a very brief update on where we are with Kerwin. And I wanted to start by saying there are so many acronyms out there currently. So the Kerwin Commission, Kerwin Blueprint, Commission for Excellence in Innovation in Education, House Bill 1372, and the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, those are all the same exact thing, okay? We've currently had four state-level blueprint coordinator meetings just really to go over the details of the. just really to go over the details of the legislation itself and also just to provide a background for all of the coordinators across the state in terms of the five policy areas, which just to remind you, those policy areas are early childhood education, high-quality teachers and leaders, college and career readiness, necessary resources to help all students be successful, and accountability. In addition, the Accountability and Implementation Board, which is the legislative board that is in charge of the blueprint areas for the state or the AIB, as it's called, they've been meeting bi-monthly since November. And they, again, have also been really involved mostly at this point with staffing their office and also just getting a foundation of knowledge for the blueprint legislation itself. The issue is that currently we are fast approaching some deadlines for the state. And it looks like that through legislative action at the state level, those timelines may be pushed back, but they have not been officially pushed back as of yet. If they're not pushed back, the AIB has to publish a state implementation plan by February 15th. Again, they've only been meeting bi-monthly since November. Then at that point, MSDE has to take that state implementation plan and develop local criteria for the local implementation plans. That has to be done by April 1st. And then from there, each local school district has to develop their local implementation plan and have that submitted to the state by June 15th. So at this point, we're waiting to see exactly what our next steps are. In the meantime, we're providing foundations of knowledge for our school system. Board of Education, I've been speaking with our county executives, speaking with all of you the last couple of times as well. So that's where we are at this point in time with Blueprint or Kerwin.
Questions?
So in the letter, it's, the letter from ESMEC, it's requesting a modified timeline to file their blueprint. That's what it's addressing, to push that back?
Yes.
Okay.
And that would be in line with really what needs to happen at this point in time. The Accountability and Implementation Board really has not been underway long enough to do something of that magnitude.
Next item that you have is the ARPA funding. I think the idea there is just trying to get an idea of what's been coming down. Because I think every time you get an email, it talks about different funding sources and, you know, what's available for education, whether it's specific grants for broadband or whether it's for education in general. And I guess they're just trying to get an idea of what basically has been made available and, you know, how we're benefiting from that.
I know that Leesel spoke to the Esser funding, which were the first rounds of the federal funding. And Micah can give you an update on the ARPA funding.
As it relates to the school system, again, just to go through the acronyms to establish where we are. The American Rescue Plan Act funding, or ARPA, or the ARP funds. What we term Esser three, which is the elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds, those are all the same thing as it relates to us. Wycomico County Public Schools received 47 million in conjunction with the ARP funds or Esser three funds. All Esser funds do flow through MSDE, so we are accountable through them. Wycomico County Public Schools has committed all of the funds over the next two and a half years to date. We have spent about 20% of those funds currently. The funding is eligible from March 13, 2019, so retroactive all the way through September 30th, 2024. So they have to be expended by that time. 30 million or 62% of the funds are allocated for capital projects that directly impact air quality in schools. So those are the funds that Leesel spoke about regarding Esser three in her presentation. 20% of the overall funding had to be earmarked for learning loss in students due to the pandemic. Currently, we are committed to about 22% of our overall funding for that purpose. In addition, a little over 6% of the ARP funds are proposed to go towards the refresh of technology. So we have a lease through Dell and our other companies when we purchase, lease laptops that every four to five years, those laptops get refreshed. So we're allocating some of the funds for that purpose. Also, obviously, PPE and cleaning supplies and cleaning equipment are included in those funds as well. So there are a number of stipulations, pretty specific requirements for eligible expenses under the ARP grants. These requirements are all posted on our website for the community to view as long with our Esser three or ARP application that we submitted to the state so they can see exactly what we applied for. We also solicited feedback from all of our schools across the district, as well as every department for WCPS, and also reached out to a number of community organizations for feedback regarding that application, which is a rolling application. So that's still currently on our website. We're still able to receive feedback and make changes as we need to between now and the next two and a half years when those funds have to be spent. So it was a lot of work in a very short period of time. From the time that the funds, where the application was distributed to us through MSDE, that had to be turned around in just a matter of a few short weeks to be resubmitted back to MSDE. So that's currently where we are with ARP. In addition, also wanted to just clarify that the ARP funds are separate. That was a separate federal guarantee than the original CARES funding that we received not long after the pandemic started. Those funds at this point in time have all been spent that initially went towards our technology so that we could go one-to-one with our student and laptops and the technology there as well as the PPE that we needed to begin with.
Yes, so did you have to, how did you enhance your infrastructure in the school system to allow your technology? Because I'm assuming all the Zoom meetings are, I call it Zoom, but the, you know, that particular type of learning was completely new. I mean, I would almost anticipate that you had to almost create an entirely new department to handle the workload. I don't know how John Moan is handling ours, but what, what exactly changed in the school system to make that feasible, possible?
I can talk about it very briefly and generally, and then we can get you more information for that. But obviously staffing was something that had to be looked at, looked at first. And I know that there were some positions that were added and also some areas that were restructured within our technology department. In addition, as you said, the infrastructure was key. We were fortunate that we had a pretty strong infrastructure system. There were areas, obviously, that needed to be beefed up so they could handle the load of the additional laptops. But we were able to, to do that pretty, pretty quickly and turn that around pretty fast once we were able to get students back into our buildings. We did prepare for that.
We expanded the use of Google Classroom, which is the platform that students use. You know, purchased a level of Zoom that would allow us to have more individuals in, in a virtual meeting at once. So, yeah, I think that, Micah, that one comment that I would just emphasize is we already had a really strong infrastructure in place that allowed us to, with some shifting of staff, especially when we were deploying all those laptops and all of those hotspots and reconfiguring all of them was, that was quite challenging initially. And then to have the help desk, we beefed up the help desk quite a bit.
I guess the laptops that went out, the laptops, I'm assuming stay at those homes?
We turned them back in.
They did, turned them back in.
Over the course of the summer to be reconfigured, if that's the right.
Yeah, one of those things.
Terminology in, in that area, and then we're redeployed to students.
Any questions? Okay. So the next, the next item on here is the masking and the virtual learning. I guess, you know, what the plans are and.
Yep.
What improvements we have.
So I brought you a copy of the latest state emergency regulation, if you're interested in that language. But basically, gosh, within the last few weeks, the, well, prior to leaving for the Christmas holiday, the state board approved and updated emergency regulation on the use of masks in the schools, which allowed for what they called off-ramps, allowing the school system or individual schools to be able to stop wearing masks. That went through the AELR, the legislative process, and was approved within the last couple of weeks. Don't have the exact date of that. But basically, the language in there allows, as I said, for the ability to, to stop wearing masks under certain conditions that have to do with transmission rate as well as vaccination rate. So the first off-ramp is that if 80% of the county population is fully vaccinated, as reported by the Maryland Department of Health, a county board can lift the requirement by passing a motion at a public meeting. And I'm sure that you're all aware that we're around 51% as a, as a community in terms of being fully vaccinated. The, the next off-ramp is that the local superintendent can lift the face covering requirement for a school facility or facilities after a principal or designated school official verifies that 80% of a school staff and students have been fully vaccinated. We keep track the best we can of the percentage of staff and students who are vaccinated. But that is, we can, by law, we can ask, but we can't require that information to be provided to us because of HIPAA. So then the final, excuse me, the final off-ramp is, has to do with transmission in the community. The, the CDC has four levels of transmission, low, moderate, substantial, and high. Wycomico is in the high category. In order to use the off-ramp, you have to, for 14 consecutive days, be in the low or moderate. And then, of course, you have to keep track of that. And if you go back up to substantial or high for 14 consecutive days, you have to re-implement the masking mandates. So at this point, we're still masks on in our schools, but obviously, we hope for better days.
Do you receive any of the N95 masks?
Yes. The, there are some that have been ordered, I think, more often than not. It's, and I don't know the language for them, but it's the kind of mask that Mr. Murray has on. But I just today was able to receive the KN95, not the N95.
They'll be provided to teachers and students?
I don't know about that, Micah.
So we currently do have a significant supply of KN95s. At this time, we're doing that as they're requested. We also are reordering additional supplies actually today as we have had those made available to us. So at this time, they're, if they're requested, we're able to provide those for staff. We currently don't have any requirements in place that staff have to wear those types of masks.
And then the virtual learning, the last board meeting and also in a parent message last week, I communicated with staff and parents that we're fully committed to remaining open. The only way that we would close as a full school system is if we were mandated to do so. However, I cautioned the, our, our school communities that if we have, if we find that we have an abundance of spread in a school, and we do see reports every day from our nursing staff, in a school, we would work in conjunction with the health department. And there is a possibility that a school may have to pivot to virtual learning on a temporary basis. Again, I'm only cautioning because I want parents and students and teachers to be prepared in the event that that were to happen. The other reason, in fact, I will tell you, I think it's, if I were to say which do I think would be the reason that we might have to pivot, of the two, it would be because of a lack of staffing, because of the number of staff who are ill. We're seeing that, we're seeing more staff out now than ever based upon COVID and other illnesses, flu, flu illnesses, et cetera. And again, we keep track of that every day. I'm hoping that no one's going to have to pivot to virtual. But we just reminded students and staff to take home your laptops every night, take home the resources in the event that we have to temporarily close a school, as we've seen around us.
Think any distinctions being made as far as the, where they're setting the bar between the Omicron variant as opposed to COVID? Because we all know that the Omicron is, is, is very contagious. We also know that it's not as severe. So when they say, oh, you have to go to virtual, I mean, is that because maybe we have high Omicron numbers that aren't necessarily as, as dangerous as the COVID?
Just having this conversation downstairs about, do we know?
Right.
Which is, do you have Delta? Do you have?
Right.
Omicron? Do you have, my son said someone had OG. I said, what's that? He said, that's original. So anyway, we don't have that information. We don't know which. And Mrs. Miles, if you want to, now might be a good time for you to join us. She's going to talk a little bit about COVID testing in a second. But she's, her area of student services is really who's, who runs point on all of this related to COVID and testing and vaccines and, and all of that. But I don't believe that we have any information on which type of variant individuals test positively with.
Can you just let the public know?
Good afternoon. Kim Miles, Assistant Superintendent with Student and Family Services.
Thank you.
Pleasure to be here. Pleasure to serve. No, Dr. Hanlon is absolutely correct. We do not know, we don't get a differentiation in terms of positive cases. And as well, to this point, CDC has not differentiated the school guidance with regard to Delta or Omicron. Whatever variant may be prevalent.
I'm, I'm suspecting that there's not going to be any differentiation made.
I don't anticipate, no, sir.
I just thought I'd ask and see from your perspective or from your side. Yeah. Any other questions, council members? Okay, thank you. The next item you had is the learning loss strategies. There's concern over so many students who are.
I was going to talk a little bit about COVID-19 testing. I think you had that on there also.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
More COVID-19 information. Yes, just to share with you, we do conduct daily diagnostic testing for staff and/or students who present as a close contact to an identified positive case or suspected positive or those who present with symptoms. We are conducting the testing in our schools. We also have staff at our central office at Northgate Drive who are conducting this as well. And it is from the time we open to extended past the time the day ends. And that is, like I said, the diagnostic testing, those are the rapid tests, is the Binax Now that is used currently. We also have the testing as required by MPSAA for winter athletics. And that, another group that is doing the testing, a state-approved entity that conducts that testing force, that is not the rapid test, that is the PCR.
Learning loss strategies.
Okay, so Dr. Briggs, the illness is going through Dr. Briggs' family, and he unfortunately is not able to be with us today. But I will talk with you in general terms about both learning loss strategy and financial literacy, which are the next two items. We clearly have learning loss from COVID as, as school systems across the country. Our experience, students who have, have learning losses as a result of the disruption to learning. We are very diligent in the assessments, both formal and informal assessments that we give to students. We did that at the beginning of the year so teachers can use that assessment information to know where students are and where their gaps are. And have been working with students in, in the regular classroom, in intervention services that they receive, and tutoring services that they receive, both during the day and outside of school. We will, we're in the midst of doing interim assessments to look at where students, the growth that students have made. And then, of course, we'll do that at the end of the school year as well. And we'll have summer learning programs, as we typically do. And the last item that we have is financial. And the last item that we have is financial literacy. We're aware that there has been an, an individual in the community who's come and spoken with you about the need for increasing financial literacy in our schools. You probably are aware, or hopefully you're aware, that we are required by Comar to have financial literacy curriculum. There are about six or seven counties in the state that do have a graduation requirement for financial literacy. Wycomico was one that did not determine that that was the best way to go about, and this is back in, I want to say, '08? It's been a while ago that that decision was made, and so, when this gentleman came forward with his concerns, we have been, Dr. Briggs has been working with his team to look at what we're currently doing, where we could beef it up, whether or not a graduation requirement is in the best interest of students, and especially how we're working with junior achievement, because junior achievement really works hand-in-hand with us on financial literacy initiatives across grade levels, not just in high school. So, he will be, along with team members, making a presentation to the board in February.
They will.
Yes.
Okay. When you say graduation requirement, how many years would that imply? Would that imply that you have to take one year of, of financial literacy? Does it mean you have to take 12 years? What does, what is the?
A graduation requirement would typically mean a credit, a course.
Credit, okay. Right, because, you know, the, the push right now, as far as financial literacy is concerned, is some type of a curriculum for the full.
We have that.
10 to 12 years.
Yes, we have that across grade levels.
In what, in what sense do you have it now?
We have it across grade levels. In some cases, it's curriculum that we're using it in specific courses, but a lot of it is through junior achievement and the partnership with them, and what they, they come into our classrooms and teach financial literacy curriculum. Individuals do, volunteers do, Mr. Malone does. He often talks about positive experience he has with that.
And junior achievement experience is going to expand when they.
That's exactly right.
Get their new facility, so.
Yep. The financial.
Because, you know, I'm trying just to evaluate, you know, what is, as far as this more recent push for financial literacy, how does, how do those recommendations, how do they differ from what is now already being in, you know, being taught to the children? And, you know, is there a, a need for enhancing the programs that you already have? Of course, I say you're already reviewing it yourselves.
We are, we are, and it's, it, I don't have any documents in front of me, but it seems to me that the, the main strategy that the, the citizen of Worcester County actually wants to see happen is a credit requirement. So, we will make a full presentation at, at the February board meeting about what we do and how we might enhance what we're already doing in February.
All right. Any?
The council?
It sounded like an invitation.
Absolutely, they know they're welcome.
It sounded like an invitation.
Who doesn't let me in?
Yes, Joe.
As, as part of that curriculum, is there anything in there that teaches them how to make change?
Well, I think they get that in math class, too.
They're not getting it.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Anything else? John, you can speak if you want to grab the mic at the podium here.
Ms. Lewis have one or two things, and I have a couple related things.
If you, would you, if you want, you can certainly use a chair here at the podium, whichever you feel comfortable with. Geez. Hold her hand.
Thank you there, Mr. Don.
You're welcome.
So, just a couple of things we wanted to.
For the public, just let them know who you are. Thank you.
I'm Tanya Lear Lewis, Board Member for District III. So, Mr. Palmer and I were, were talking, and we are on the same page with many things. And we wanted to, number one, give a huge shout-out to Mrs. Ashby and her group, because it wasn't mentioned that her team is working ahead of schedule and under budget. So, they are working really, really hard on that. So, she didn't say it today. She sometimes doesn't like to, per se, toot her own horn, but I wanted to make sure that you all were aware of that, that she and her group are diligently working on meeting these timelines, and, and we've spoken, and it is a very stressful situation. Her to-do list is long, her calendar is going off, her timer's going off, for her to have all these things done on a certain amount of very stringent timeframe. So, that was one of them. And then, the other things we wanted to talk about, Mr. Palmer? Okay?
John Palmer, Wycomico County School Board. About a month ago, we had two high school teams come up here, and they were given a proclamation due to their winning of the state championships in soccer, and this is really a tremendous, it's a good recruiting thing, not only for the schools, but I'm for, for you guys to mention when you talk to other, other counties and all to get, get some people down here. And the rings that we had talked about, they're kind of expensive. I really don't know how the students are going to be able to afford all of the expenses, but Dr. Hanlon has come up with a way to where we could possibly provide part of the money, and I was just wondering if there's any way that your finance director could get together with our finance director and perhaps work a little something out for these two teams and do like a, you know, big presentation thing. And I think it would really be good for the county. It might set a precedence, I don't know, but if you're going to set a precedence, I mean, why not do it with the kids? That's what we're here for. So, that's one of the things that I had to speak about. The other thing, it came up when you just mentioned infrastructure and virtual learning. I know every few years you go out for a contract with the companies to come in with IT, Comcast, and all that, and when you renew these contracts, I ask that you look at them a little more closely, because some people who you might deal with have, already have some services in place that could be used, but because there's not enough people in that area, and they cannot recoup their cost in four to five years, they will not hook up the lateral connections to those areas. So, if you could pay a little more attention to that detail, and perhaps your attorneys could write something legally in there that in order for them to get this contract, they might want to extend some of those lateral extensions out so that the school is not expending all that money. I mean, I think we put out like over 400-some hotspots, and, you know, just to reach a, a lot of these kids. And then, the final thing was, we're all coming up for reelection, not only school board, but county council in eight months or so, and we're all coming up for election at the same time. That, to me, is not a very, very good way of doing things. So, I, I was looking around, I see Cecil County has a staggered school board. They're real similar to us in numbers. I didn't get as far to see what their county council did, but that might be something to check on. But I was just wondering if there was a way that your attorneys and our attorneys could get together and come up with something about staggering these terms, so that there wouldn't be the possibility that we're going to come in with a whole new group of board members, new superintendents, you all could come in with a whole new group of county councilmen and a brand-new county executive. There's no telling what happens. So, I think a little preparation might be, might be good in those areas. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree with you on that, Mr. Palmer. Cecil County actually has staggered terms for their county council members.
Also?
Yes.
And it, for the county, for the county, I don't know about the school board for the county, it would check, take a charter change, do that, so.
Cecil County is the only county, by the way, in the state with staggered elections at the council.
We have legislation for.
I think it's a good idea. Any other questions, comments? Well, again, thank you very much. Well, hopefully, some of us will see you in February.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for letting me use your pen. I lost mine, I guess.
It's freezing in here.
Yeah, Bill Chambers just sent something out on that recently about having staggered elections, but there's. Never been an issue on the council?
Council, right. Never been an issue. That's one, that's one of the things that's never been an issue, so. It's just like the way the elected school board, never an issue.
Nice tie. True.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the draft 2022 Land Preservation Parks and Recreation Plan. Steve Miller, good to have you here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Good to see you, and happy new year. I'm here to talk about the draft of the 2022 Land Preservation Parks and Recreation Plan. It's one more acronym for you here today. The LPPRP is what we refer to it as. This is a very large and detailed document, over 190-some pages, so I don't intend to dive into the weeds on any particular item, but what I wanted to do is just present to the council a very general overview of where we are in the process, and I'll divide this into real three, three simple parts. First, I'll just remind you of the purpose of the LPPRP and why we do this every five years. Secondly, I'm going to give just a handful of highlights of the plan, particularly related to recreation parks issues and how it ties to recommendations. And then, lastly, just touch on next steps in the process as to where we go with both local and state approval processes. So, and once that's done, I'd be happy to field any comments or answer any questions that you might have. Now, in terms of the purpose of the plan, counties do an LPPRP every five years for two primary reasons. Number one, it is a requirement, a state requirement, to be eligible for program open space, to have an updated plan. And then, secondly, it, it is a valuable planning tool for recreation parks agencies to identify or assess your facilities in open spaces, identify gaps in services and where needs of the population are not being met, and then, thirdly, to help us develop long-term plans to address whatever gaps might exist where, where practical and feasible. And I will say, though it is a state requirement, we have to do this to be eligible for open space, I will tell you, it's a very practical document. It doesn't just sit on the shelf for five years. We use it often. We refer to it every year when we plan our budgets, when we plan CIPs. This is a very valuable and practical document from the recreation parks standpoint. So, we'll use this throughout the life of the plan, and then, of course, update it as conditions change. That's very quickly the first part, the purpose of, of why we do this every five years. Secondly, I'd like to touch on just a few highlights that are included in the draft plan. Most of my comments are going to focus on Chapter Four, which is the Recreation and Parks chapter, which includes a lot of the capital recommendations, and I'm going to focus on three main areas. One, I'll, I'll touch on facilities and open spaces and how we analyze facilities. Secondly, I'll touch on stakeholder input that we received and how that helped us shape priorities. And then, lastly, how we use both of those, the analysis and the public feedback, and how we use those things to build capital recommendations, which are explained in more detail in Chapter Four by Planning Area. Now, in terms of facilities and analyzing facilities, there's a number of different tools we use to analyze our facilities. I'm going to highlight just two very quickly. The first is what's called a proximity analysis. The proximity analysis is a mapping tool that shows how our parks, facilities, and amenities are located in proximity, both to population centers and also in proximity to one another. The way it works is, you see on this map, it's hard, hard to see the colors there, but what we do is draw green circles, so it, and we plot all the different park, public park facilities in the county, and these green circles in rural areas, we use a five-mile radius and draw a circle, and then, in more populated metro areas, we do a half-mile circle. And so, what you do is, after you draw these circles, you can physically see on the map where gaps in service might be. If there's white space and, and no services at all, that would show itself in a map. This map, as you can see, is, is basically covered in green. This is, encompasses all of our parks, facilities, and so, we're pretty blessed to have pretty good coverage throughout the county of different types of facilities. But in the plan, there's also specific maps, if you wanted to look at water access or picnic facilities or trail access, athletic field, we'd have a proximity map for each of those types of things. So, you can physically see where are there gaps in services, and, and maybe that could be a focus in the future. And again, I'll say, for the most part, for all of our different park types, we are pretty fortunate to have pretty solid coverage throughout the county in most places. Another tool that was incorporated into this plan, this is a new tool developed by the state, it's called a park equity tool. So, this tool not only analyzes how parks are physically spaced out from one another, but this looks at facilities from an equity lens to see how we're meeting needs with various census block groups and segments of the population. So, for example, in addition to where a facility might be located, the equity tool would look at things such as community demographics, socioeconomic factors, and might even factor in access to public transportation. If you have a park that's out in a rural area, is there public transportation? And so, what it would do is, is kind of put all these factors together, and it would give each area of the county a park equity score. So, in this particular map, the darker areas, darker shaded areas are a low equity, and the lighter shaded areas are higher equity scores. I do want to point out, we've made this comment to the state as well, this is a brand-new tool that the state has developed, and unfortunately, they did not include all of our facilities. So, it's hard to really get a full picture as to what the equity is, because not all of our facilities are included. So, we're working with the state to up that for the next plan. They, they didn't have the, the capacity to do that this go-around. So, I do think this, this could be a very valuable tool for us as the plan or as this tool develops and refines over the course of the years, but this would give us another look as we address equity issues in terms of access to our parks and, and to all residents. So, that was another tool that we used. Lastly, I'll just touch on stakeholder input. We got a tremendous amount of feedback in this plan, on this update of the plan. We had, obviously, participation from our commission, our Recreation and Parks Commission. We work with several recreation councils that are located throughout the county, and then, we worked with other stakeholder groups, including the folks that you just saw here with Wycomico County Public Schools, as to how we can interact and utilize our facilities better. We also received official input from the municipalities. That was a new requirement from the state this year, that they required counties. In some counties, it's not been as big of an issue here, but in some counties, there's no input at all from municipalities. So, they made that a requirement of this plan update, that we had to engage municipalities, both on the front end and throughout that process. So, yes, sir.
Steve, is that just municipalities, or is that all townships?
My understanding was municipalities, but I, I don't know that, to be, to be quite honest with you. So, we did that. We reached out to all the municipalities. We got a, a fair amount. Some didn't respond at all, but some did and some engaged, so we've included that information. I thought that process went very well, and we had a lot of very good, productive conversations that we could incorporate into the plan. And then, last but not least, obviously, when you do a plan like this, you want to get public input, and we did a public input survey. I'm very pleased to tell you that, to date, we have received 832 responses to the survey. So, for reference, in our 2017 plan, we had just over 100. So, we've got over nearly 1,000 responses to the public survey, which is a great amount of feedback. There's a lot to digest in the survey. It's in the appendix, if you, if you want to look at all the specifics of that, but I'll just give you just a quick highlight of, of the top things that residents identified that they want to see developed or improved. I just picked the top three, just to, to keep it moving. One was trail-based recreation, so walking trails, running trails, hiking, biking, those types of things. 61% wanted that. Second, passive outdoor leisure, so things like playgrounds, picnic areas, dog parks, things of that nature. And then, third, water access, water recreation type of activities.
What happened to pickleball?
Well, I.
That was high on the list?
Well, I'll touch on that, but. Well, I'll touch on that, but these things that you see here, water access, trails, those things are very consistent with what you'll see in surveys, state surveys, national surveys, so the county's very similar. This is the type of thing people want. We did calculate, as well, write-in responses. Pickleball actually was one of the top write-ins. Disc golf was a top write-in, and trails and water recreation were also repeated dozens of times in, in writing. We had over 100 different write-in responses to the survey. So all of this is interesting, again, and great timing for us, as we consider plans and looking at the West Metro, looking at Conley Mill, and whatever other opportunities are out there. All of this is great input for us as we build our plans and move down the line. Last but not least, we took the facility analysis and then all the public input, and we use both of those to help build capital recommendations. And you'll see that in the plan in Chapter Four. The state asked us to build out capital recommendations for 15 years, so that, that was a very difficult task, to project that far out. So we did the best we could, and I'll just give you a quick highlight of, of what the sum total of that was. But I do want to remind the council that the capital recommendations in here are simply that, at this point, we're projecting out 15 years. Nothing in this plan would obligate the county to any particular project. It would not obligate us to any amount of funding, and it doesn't identify funding sources. I think, as a department, we work really hard to try to identify federal, state, any type of grant that we can get our hands on. So none of that is really, you're not committing to that by, by endorsing the plan by any stretch. So they are strictly recommendations for planning as we move ahead. Just in summary, again, this is broken down in more detail in the plan, but over the next 15 years, we're projecting, at this point, 62 projects at around $38 million. And, of course, that, who knows where prices go over the next five to 10 years? But again, Chapter Four, each of those projects is listed by Planning Area, and I'd be happy to, to touch on any specifics if, if you'd like.
So Steve, could I just ask you a question while you're on that slide?
Yes.
So when you go back to the equity chart, the low equity was in the west side of the county. So wouldn't that, I mean, don't you need to address the low equity areas first?
Yeah, I think, again, this is not a complete tool at this point, but yes, that, that is the purpose of something like this, is to look at, if, if there is an issue of equity, I think that can be part of the decision-making process as to where, where do you prioritize and where are there opportunities? So I do think that is something to consider, yes. So this is, this is just a summary, again, of the capital projects. Lastly, I'll just highlight the next steps in this process. This is obviously just an initial work session here. Unless there's any concerns on behalf of the council, our deadline to submit to the state is the end of this month, and that would be to submit a draft plan. We would receive then comments back from the state, in addition to the public comments that we've already received and different stakeholder groups. We would revise, over the next couple of months, we would revise the plan. We would come back to you, hopefully by mid to late spring, to look at a revised version of this plan. And then, right now, the state deadline is July 1 to submit a final locally-approved plan. So my point in telling you that is, we don't have to cover everything today. I'm happy to cover whatever you'd like, but you'll see this again. It will go through some revisions over the next few months, as we get state comments and local comments. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or receive any comments that you have, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, can you go back to the slide before that one?
I...
Yeah, so if we're looking at the number of projects, central, then we're looking at equity, that has the highest amount currently. But that has the highest amount of number of projects, correct?
Yeah, again, I, I don't want to put too much stock in the equity map, because it's not a complete tool. And in the central area, I think that was one of the areas of deficiency where they didn't have everything listed, so... But the central is also where the bulk of your population is, so that you're dealing with Salisbury and the bulk of your population, so...
Okay.
Equity map, does an equity map refer to where, based on population, that you're getting the, let's say, if it's a small population, that you're not getting as much equity out of your investment? Or is it just the opposite?
I think equity, I think the, the state is referring to equity as in access to all members of the population, so they would factor in demographics such as age, financial status, minority populations, if, if there's not access to either have a park or to be able to get to a park. So they would kind of factor all that in, and I don't, I don't know the formula, but the state, the state developed this tool, they have a formula, so they would factor all that in, calculate the formulas, and say, there's equity in terms of access to folks. So you'd, you'd want to have a high equity score, where there's a low score, you, you might have a deficiency where you try to meet that need in some way.
Because equity usually is a term used for, you know, the return on, like, an investment, in my opinion, sort of like, if it's a high equity, that means you, you get a lot of bang for your buck.
Yeah, I think this is more equal, equal access.
Equal opportunity.
You're looking at fairness.
Yeah, yeah, a fairness measure of some kind, and...
Okay. Are, are they including what's in the park? I mean, everybody has access, but the fact that some parks have some things and other parks have different things, is that part of the equity?
Yeah, so in the proximity analysis, definitely. We have analysis based on different amenity types, so you can, you can evaluate it in different ways. I don't know, I'll double-check on that, as far as the equity analysis, if it includes that, because it, it could, yeah, that could get complicated, because not everyone would have water access if you don't live in a place near water. So I'd have to look at that. I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Any other questions? Yes, Joe?
I'll just say quickly, the, first of all, I don't, I don't know if any other county in the state got that many responses percentage-wise. That's really great for the survey, 832 responses, that was pretty incredible. I did see in the State Park Investment Commission that they did say that they, the, the new one that would, was put out, I guess it was November, late November, they released that. They are looking, the state of Maryland is looking for places to, I don't want to put words in their mouth and say that they want to turn local parks into state parks, but they are, they, they definitely feel like they, obviously, they don't have enough places for state facilities. So a place like, you know, Pirate's Wharf or something like that might be an area that, you know, that could be planned for something like that in the future. I don't know, I don't know where those communications go in the future, but it did, the way that they listed it out of that reading through their 86-page report, it did say that's something that they might be looking to, a place like Wycomico County, or, or something different, or completely different. But I don't, I don't, I can't imagine that's integrated with this document, given that it started, it was just released. But that's something I'd want to put on your radar. And, you know, I'll save the rest of my comments. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? Just as an aside, someone brought to my attention, which really surprised me the day, they said, because of supply chain problems and issues, and with it being so hard as far as biking, that a lot of people are turning to running. Have you seen or witnessed any of that transition? From, there, there's actually a, a lot of people who are, a lot of running events are now escalating, they're, they're having many more running events, simply because of the fact that those that may want to get into biking can't do it right now. I don't know if it's...
Yeah, I don't have a lot of insight on that. I know a lot of our running events continue to gain in popularity, but I don't, I don't have data on that.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Anything else? No? All right, Steve, well, thank you very much. We look forward to you getting back to us as you develop it further, and whatever the recommendations might be from the state level.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Entertained a motion from council to adjourn.
To move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Means adjourn.